To the dais. Okay, if I can get everyone to take their seats. Okay, welcome to the regular city council meeting of Tuesday, March 6th at 6:45 PM. And again, I apologize for the delay. Planning Commission joint meeting went a little bit overboard, or not overboard, over time. If I can remind everyone, if you have not already done so, silence your pagers and cellphones. And Madam Clerk, could we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Vega.
Here.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Present.
Councilmember Mosby.
Present.
Mayor Potem Janelle Osborne.
Here.
Mayor Bob Lingle.
Here. Okay, if I can get everyone to rise, remove your hats if you have one on, and join Reverend Michael Cook in the invocation.
The economist Thomas Sowell has famously said, "People who enjoy meetings should not be in charge of anything." I doubt that there's anyone here who's particularly fond of meetings, yet here we are, and as Margaret Mead said, "Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world." Indeed, it is the only thing that ever has. I invite you to become comfortable where you are standing, to close your eyes if you wish, and to breathe a few times as deeply as you wish. Air is good for you. Let us lift our minds and hearts to that which is sacred to each one of us. Let us invoke truth so that we may know what is. Let us invoke wisdom that we may discern what is best. Let us invoke compassion that we may feel with one another. Let us invoke courage that we may act on all three. Give us open ears to hear the voices of our people and the voices of our colleagues. Give us the grace to compromise with our adversaries. Give us hearts for the common good. Help us to change the world. These things we ask of the diverse well-springs of our moral selves. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please remain standing and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and please have a seat. Okay, I'm going to be reading a proclamation honoring National Women's History Month. Do we have someone here to receive that proclamation? Ah, yes, we do. Hello. Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome. Okay, this is a proclamation from the City of Lompoc celebrating Women's History Month. Whereas, the month of March 2018 has been declared Women's History Month, and whereas, American women of every race, class, ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength, strength, of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas, American women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of life of the nation by constitution, by constituting a significant portion of the labor force, working inside and outside of their home. Whereas, American women have been leaders, not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in abolishing in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, and the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which created more fair and just social society for all. Whereas, American women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement. Now therefore, I, Bob Lingle, Mayor of City of Lompoc, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2018 as Women's History Month.
Thank you, Bob. On behalf of the, one of the very first veterans organizations in existence, Daughters of the American Revolution, I accept this on behalf of all our local chapter members of the DAR, the Rancho Prisma Chapter. Thank you very much, and we appreciate this acknowledgement.
Okay, and now, next we have a presentation from Candace Coff. No? Oh, okay. You don't look like Candace, so you can come up.
Mayor, councilman, staff, and audience, it's my pleasure as the safety officer for the City of Lompoc to do the presentation. Candace Coff, who was our chairperson, was not able to join us tonight. I'm here to do the Second Quarter Above and Beyond Awards. The Central Safety Committee meets quarter, meets monthly, and every quarter, we take recommendations from staff, from all of the employees regarding different above and beyond activities from the employees. This month, we're pleased to announce an award to Gail Greer, landfill supervisor; Ben Segura, heavy equipment operator; and Raul Rodriguez, our landfill coordinator. This was made by Councilwoman Janelle Osborne. Ben and Raul found an urn with cremains and a photo of a World War II veteran at the landfill. They contacted Gail, their supervisor, who called AmeriCorps' Missions United, and they were able to identify the veteran and find a place for the cremains in a national cemetery. They each will receive a certificate and also a gift card for $50. It's great to know that not only are they doing their job, they're also taking care of our vets. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next, we have a presentation by the Lompoc Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau.
Good evening, council. I am here to present our biannual report from the period of July to December of 2017. And I, you should have the report in front of you, and I thought I would just highlight some items from said report. So regarding our visitor traffic information, you can see that we had 880 walk-ins during that time period, which is up 270 from the same reporting period the previous year. Our number of calls were 1,050, which was up an average of two calls per day, based on the same reporting period of last year. And we handed out 53 visitor packets that were mailed at the direct request of potential visitors, 138 visitor packets mailed as a result of magazine ads. That number is down from the previous reporting period based on the reimbursable advertising money not being available, so we're not placing as many ads. And 11 relocation packets distributed locally and mailed to potential residents. Some website analytics, look at the type, the top five countries that search out Lompoc. I think it's fascinating. That number is, I think, up 10,000 from the previous year, same reporting period. And these are the top five pages for the last periods from 2016 and 17. Those numbers are also up, I think, almost double traffic. These are the top five downloads from our websites, so the Flower Tour map, Heritage Walk, Wine Trail map, Military Discounts, and Halama Beach are popular. Our social media, you can see Facebook specifically is consistently growing, starting from 2016, we've increased. We have 1454 followers on Instagram at the end of the reporting period, and 131 followers on Pinterest as well, so we're really trying to increase our social media presence. And then in that reporting period, I wanted to highlight some of the community events that we were involved with. So we had a very successful Old Town Market that ran from June 30th to August 18th from 5 to 8, so council approved an increase in the time from two hours to three, and all the feedback was great. The traffic during that last hour remained consistent and busy, and so we have decided to continue that schedule for this year as well. Dates this year are going to be June 29th to August 10th, so we'll have seven weeks with seven different themes. We'll be launching with the LHS Alumni Car Cruise and partnering again with LVCHO with another Open Streets event during that time as well. Our Military Affairs Committee threw a fantastic Fourth of July celebration, bike parade and concert, so kids decorated bikes in a patriotic style, beginning at the Veterans' Memorial Building, and paraded to Centennial Park for a free concert. We had a free bounce house, games, and activities for kids. It was a great turnout. I'm sure that a lot of you were there, so that was, that was a good time. We held our annual installation and awards banquet, where we acknowledged some very important people in our community, so the Volunteer of the Year Jacob Gustafson, Small Business Excellence's Garcia Dance Studio Woman of the Year Anne Bockus, and Man of the Year Bob Campbell. We hosted these Business Connection luncheons with Assemblyman Jordan Cunningham, FCC Warden Steve Langford, California Earthquake Authority Glenn Palmeroy, and Nick Miller with SpaceX. We had our annual Scarecrow competition. We had a fantastic participation. I think we had 19 entries, and so it's kind of hard to see from here, but a lot of really creative and fun ideas. It's an economic development driver, so it encourages people in the community to go out to the businesses, enjoy themselves while supporting our local small businesses. We also had, hosted Old Town Trick or Treat on the 28th, and that's where literally hundreds of kids came into the downtown area and trick or treated at the businesses. It was two hours, and we went through candy. I've never seen so many kids in my life, so it was, it was a really great turnout. Our Hispanic Business Committee, who supports youth athletic scholarships, hosted their second SIP-Lompoc, and that was a great success as well. And that Small Business Saturday, we had over 30 participating businesses. That's another economic development driver, so you get a map, you're encouraged to go around to participating businesses, get a stamp, and then you're entered into a drawing for a gift certificate at one of the local businesses, so it again encourages shopping local. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions? Councilwoman Rosmarie.
Is the visitor packet that's mailed out also available electronically? So if someone emailed you, is that something you can send out via email?
Parts of it.
Okay.
So there are brochures and pamphlets and things that we, that aren't available electronically necessarily, but if someone wanted something, we would put something together for them.
Okay. And then you mentioned that you did place advertisements in three, off the top of your head, do you know what those are?
Yep, so we're actively placing ads with Antelope Valley Press, and then we did the California Visitors Guide as well. So there was two Antelope Valley Press and one was the California Visitors Guide. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have a presentation by the Lompoc Unified School District.
Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. I'm pleased to present a brief update on Lompoc Unified School District. My name is Kathy Froming, and I'm the Assistant Superintendent of Ed Services in Lompoc Unified. First of all, just a little bit of background on Lompoc Unified School District. We have nine elementary schools, two middle schools, two high schools, one alternative high school, the Bob For Nash Community Day School, and the Mission Valley Independent Study Program. So collectively, those represent approximately 9,700 students. We have $100 million budget and approximately 1,000 employees. I'm here tonight basically to provide some information about how Lompoc Unified is funded because the state of California updated the funding models for education, and it's, it represents the biggest change to funding in 40 years in California. So LCFF stands for Local Control Funding Formula, and the LCAP, the Local Control Accountability Plan, actually identifies goals and actions on how we're going to spend that funding. So in Lompoc, or as every district in California, every student generates a base grant of money. And if a student falls into a high needs category such as low socioeconomic status, English learner, or foster youth, we get supplemental funds on top of the base grant. And if we have over 55% of those high needs group, we get something called concentration grant money. So it's a much more equitable way to fund school districts based on need. The LCAP in Lompoc Unified has four goals that are aligned with our Board of Education goals. Essentially, goal one is to maximize the achievement of, academic achievement of all students. Goal two is to provide positive and effective communication among district stakeholders, students, and staff. Goal three is to develop the capacity of all staff, and goal four is to provide a safe and respectful learning environment for our students. So every district's LCAP, as I mentioned previously, must include goals and actions and related expenditures. Significantly, the supplemental concentration dollars that are on top of the base grant have to be principally directed to the students who generated those funds. So in the past, school districts have used the dollars in a way that weren't principally directed, so the County of Santa Barbara reviews our LCAP to ensure that students who have the most needs are having the most dollars associated with those students. It's, the LCAP is not a document that we just decide what to put in. We have to follow certain guidelines, or eight state priorities, and I've identified those priorities on the right. Basic services refer to leaky roofs and, and conditions of fields, implementation of standards, parental engagement, student achievement, student engagement, school climate, access to courses. All of those state priorities have to have goals and actions associated with them. As you might guess, some of the state priorities are easier to quantify than others. I can tell you that school climate is quantified by suspension data and absenteeism. Interestingly enough, the Every Student Succeeds Act, which was the act that followed No Child Left Behind, has called out for more accountability with the academic piece of California's ESAP Plan. As a matter of fact, California submitted the, their ESAP Plan, Every Student Succeeds Act, to the federal government, and the federal government did not approve that plan because we did not have enough emphasis on the academic metric, essentially being the Smarter Balance Assessment Consortium tests in English and math, as well as college and career indicators. So we're still working that with the federal government. California believes in a multiple measures assessment accountability program, and the federal government believes we should have more emphasis again on the academic piece, the math and English. So, this year, what are some of the new and increased services at the high school level that we have implemented based on the LCAP? Well, tomorrow in Lompoc Unified, every single 11th grader is going to take the SAT test, and we're very excited about that. Lompoc is somewhat on the cutting edge for this particular item, as there's a legislative bill in front of the California Legislative House, I guess, to allow students to use the SAT in place of the SBACK test, the Smarter Balance test. So in, in California, there's an assessment test called the SBACK. It used to be California Standards Test. Third grade through eighth grade takes the SBACK test in addition to 11th graders. Well, now, 11th graders, if this bill passes, will be allowed to use the SAT test, which is great because the SAT test is a universal test for getting into the California State University system, as well as other universities throughout the United States. In the past, it used to be the ACT was a Midwest test, but SAT is typically accepted for most universities. We are also paying for every student to take an advanced placement test this year. We certainly believe in the intent of Every Student Succeeds Act to provide more equity and access for our students in Lompoc, and in the past, students would have to determine what AP test they would take because the fee for taking a test is $75 for each test. So now we have taken that responsibility away, and we know that students who take advanced placement coursework and indeed take the test are more likely to be successful at the collegiate level, so excited about that. Next year, we plan to, for students that qualify under that free and reduced lunch category, pay for two college applications. I am charged with soliciting stakeholder input from multiple stakeholders in the community, and I spoke at Lompoc High School, I think the week before last, and a young man exceedingly bright talked to me about the difficulty in paying for college applications and how he had wished he had the funding to pay for more than a couple of college applications, so very excited about that. You can see how we're attempting to equalize opportunities for students in Lompoc. In our school district, we have 75, excuse me, 67% of our students come from households that are deemed low socioeconomic households. That's across the district. In town, we have certain schools that are at 88, 89, 90% households free and reduced. So we have challenges with students coming from homes that really are challenged fiscally, and as you well know, our unemployment in Lompoc has, the last few years, been the highest in the county, higher than Guanajuato, higher than Santa Maria, so we see students who come from homes whose parents are working double jobs or don't, or don't have jobs at all. We've also implemented something called Apex Credit Recovery. That is an online credit recovery program in the summer where students who have not been successful in a traditional course and have a D or F but want to make up that course, they can do so online. Part of our thinking there was freshmen and sophomores sometimes don't intuit the importance of passing A through G coursework, and they recognize a little bit later that, well, you know what, I didn't give the attention I should have to that class, but we don't want to penalize them when they're a junior or senior applying for college. So we are working at different angles to support students in their ability to access college. We are certainly working with organizations in Lompoc for career technical education. Lompoc Unified School District was the beneficiary of a career technical education grant two years ago in excess of $800,000. Those of you who are from my era in schooling remember that there are often woodworking classes, electrical classes, that weren't necessarily academic, but it taught students trades, so we know there's more than one pathway to success. It's not just the academic piece. So very excited that the state of California recognizes career technical ed is so important. From what I've been able to discern, budgets in California education communities are going to be increased for career technical education. That's good for us in Lompoc. The Community Day School, we took over from the county. We are moving it to the El Camino campus in 2018-19. We are working to generate new courses that incorporate next-gen science standards. As a matter of fact, Cabrillo High School is on the cutting edge for next-gen science curriculum, and they've been named to Think Tank by the County of Santa Barbara to talk to other high schools about what they're doing, so very excited there. We're increasing music programs, CalSoak Model Technology classrooms, lots of wonderful things going on at the high school level, and you will find these actions and services identified in our LCAP. Middle school, avid advancement via individual determination. We've expanded that to both middle schools. We have CalSoak tutors, increased music programs. We've purchased lab science equipment that are supporting our next-gen science standards, and we have model technology classrooms. We are moving to one-to-one with our computers, so excited about that. And elementary, for the first time in eight years this past summer, we offered summer school. The summer school was focused on next-gen science standards. We integrated math and English along with the science standards, and the children loved it. We are currently in the process for planning summer school this year. We have the funding to do so, and I believe that's going to make a huge difference in students' performance academically. We were already seeing it, actually, kids took a test at the beginning of the school year called the STAR test, and the scores on that test, based on a year ago comparatively speaking, were much higher, and that makes sense because kids went to summer school and they wanted to be there. Very popular program. We've added PE teachers at every elementary school. Those positions were cut in 2008, and we know, based on our work with LVCHO and a focus on wellness, that kids need to exercise. They're using the Sparks Curriculum. That's a cost of about $1 million, but once again, we are making decisions that are going to move kids forward, not only academically, but physically as well. So, new and increased services for district personnel. We've had professional development. We have a consultant from Santa Barbara County Office of Ed for our English learners. We are working to build parent programs for helping them to access the information at Lompoc Unified. We have increased Family Services Agency to provide counseling for our students that have experienced trauma. We are very much looking into restorative approaches for behavior at our schools, and you've read in the newspaper of late, we have challenges with social media and what that does for safety. I would really like to acknowledge Lompoc Police Department for positively impacting that situation last week. I believe we had 10 officers from Lompoc PD at Cabrillo High School really felt the support there. I know Lompoc PD is challenged with lots of their work, but safety was of paramount importance and felt very supported by Lompoc PD, so thank you. So, who, when, and with whom? Stakeholder engagement is not something that I believe in, while it is mandated by the state of California for Lompoc Unified to solicit input from the community in terms of what they want for the education of their students. And probably the most insightful input I have received is from the students at Lompoc High School and Cabrillo High School. And what's exciting, students see that their comments are actually taken seriously by some of the things that are incorporated in the LCAP, like PE, for instance, at elementary school. I was talking about high school, but kids needed PE, and so to hire PE is just a reflection of the genuineness in which we take people's input. And so I'm talking to Rotary Clubs, different groups, and getting their input on how we can improve upon the education of Lompoc students because ultimately, ultimately, what we all want, what we all have want, what we all have in common, is to prepare our local students to be contributing members of a complex global society. I heard members of the Planning Commission talk about, or actually, I believe it was Councilman Vega, about what we do for kids coming up. And so, I appreciate the opportunity to leverage our resources with the city and nonprofit organizations to ensure that kids in Lompoc get what they need and they can have jobs that pay for families and homes and stay here in Lompoc. So, thank you. Any questions?
Okay, any questions? Thank you very much, and thank you for all the work that you do, the staff does, to prepare our kids for the future.
My pleasure.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to have an auditor's report.
I'd like to give an introduction for our auditor from Glen Burdette. Aaron Nagel was the primary principal on the audit this year, and just like to turn it over to her for the presentation.
Okay. Repeat your name one more time?
Aaron Nagel.
Okay, thank you.
I can do this. Thanks for having me. As Brad said, my name is Aaron Nagel. I'm a CPA and principal with Glen Burdette. We are your independent certified public accountants. We do the audit every year, and I'm here to kind of walk you through the results of that audit for June 30, 17. We've been doing the audit since approximately 2011. I just wanted to give you a quick history of kind of where we were and where we are now. When we started that audit in 2011, due to a lot of staffing turnover and understaffing, there was probably about a year behind on the audit report. We had a significant amount, over ten, material weakness findings, and over the five years, we're now down to just one finding, and it has to do with some uses of Excel spreadsheets. And I know that the MUNIS system is a welcome addition to the department and will probably do away with those findings in the future. The report that I'm going to talk about tonight is the CAFER, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, and in it, it has the basic financial statements. And that's the section that we do the audit on. And so, for the year in June 30, 17, we finished that audit in December, and we were able, which is a normal audit timeline. We start around June, and we come out and do some interim work. We come back out in the fall, once the books are closed, and we do an audit of all the numbers as of June 30, including the financial statements. And we were able to complete the financial statements and include our audit report and file that on time with both the State Controller's Office as well as GFOA, who is the Government Finance Officers Association. And, you know, as you know, this is year two of producing a CAFER, whereas prior to that was just the basic financial statements. And so, it's a big step up in this reporting package, and I know your staff has spent a lot of significant time to get the financial reporting package to this level. I wanted to point out our audit report, which is on page 18 of the packet that you have, and that is an unqualified, clean audit report. There's nothing to report in terms of what our opinion is. We gave a fair opinion and that everything is fairly stated in all material respects. The audit report goes through and talks about some other sections of the CAFER and what is audited and what isn't, if you wanted to kind of delineate between what sections you're seeing in there. Let's see, one of the things I had here. In relation to how the audit report looks, it's the same that it's looked over the past couple of years. There have been no changes, but as you know, this is year three of a big new GASB, which is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, implementing the pension standard. And so, this is year three of that, but I did want to kind of just run through that really quickly because it leads into another new GASB pronouncement that's going to be coming out for fiscal '18, so that's on the horizon. The pension standard basically brought, as you know, that net pension liability onto your books, which you can see on the Statement of Net Position. I have the page numbers right here. The Statement of Net Position is on page 62. That's your government-wide financial statement. And the reason why I wanted to point this out is a big difference in your pension liability being reported here is historically, before 2015, it was really only reported in the footnotes. And as you know, that changed when you brought that liability on the books, and the big accounting difference is you're not seeing that big liability or any capital assets, those longer-term assets and liabilities, in your governmental funds, so your general fund, per se. They are reported here, government-wide, which is a requirement under full accrual and accounting. And the reason why I wanted to point that out is, beginning in 2018, there's a new GASB pronouncement for other post-employment benefits, so that are other than pension. So, that standard will be very similar to the pension standard, and it's going to be bringing on a significant liability. You know, in the footnotes, it's summarized as of June 30, 17, on page, let's see, page 112, it starts, that liability was about 17 million at June 30, 17, and I believe it's going to be approximately 20 million of unfunded liability that's coming onto the books. And it's something that's not new. It's always been there. It's always been reported in your financial statements in the CAFER. It's just something that will be now on your balance sheet, very similar to the pension liability. At the end of the footnotes, there's a very long summary of all of the new accounting pronouncements that are coming out, but none of them have a material effect on the financial statements or anything large on the horizon, other than the two that I just mentioned there. The audit process was very smooth. We had very, the staff worked very hard, provided everything that we asked for in a timely manner, and we were able to complete everything on time. So, with that, I wanted to open up for any questions that you might have on the basic financial statements.
Any questions for Ms. Nagel? Councilor Mosby.
How many places or communities do you audit for?
We do several other cities. We also do some colleges and universities and their foundations, related foundations in California.
So, in respect to other cities, do you see anything that stands out in this audit report? I mean, I know a lot of what you did was just making sure one plus one equals two.
Right, right.
I found a few typos and a few other issues in here. There was a half a paragraph, or half a sentence was left out, or a couple, whatever, and some other things like that, which I think we were going to get cleaned up. But are there other anomalies that you see here?
No, I know that other, all the other cities in California I can speak to specifically are also dealing with the same pension questions, and, you know, it's 10 pages of additional footnotes, and the other post-employment benefits will add another five. That is not any different or treated any differently, you know, when we audit them for other cities. I do have to say that we have seen the staff be very proactive in looking at that information and working with your actuaries and getting out in front of that information ahead of time. So, they've been working hand-in-hand with us. You know, as soon as we knew about that standard a couple of years ago, they brought in the actuaries to, let's look at the numbers and see how to report that. So, no, I would say there are no anomalies, different than what we've opined on in the financial statements.
With the pension, we'd seem, I think we have, looking at a couple of other audits, other communities with Pepper and stuff, we have a larger group moving into that than a lot of other agencies have. It looks like we're a little bit ahead of the curve from what I've seen.
Yeah, you know, I don't know if I can speak to that on all of them. You have two different types of plans with your miscellaneous. You're an agent plan, and with safety, you're cost sharing, and so, they do have different accounting, and they're looked at a little bit differently in the financials, but nothing different than I would say other cities are dealing with.
I was looking at the percentages. It looks like we're healing faster than, like the county's numbers are, more specifically, I think. We're getting wrapped up a little sooner.
Yeah, you know, I think with the budget review that you have upcoming and the analysis that you did with your actuaries on looking at your increase of contribution rates over the next 10 years was very forward-thinking, where, you know, most cities are in a one-to-two year budget cycle, and when you look at funding those pension liabilities, you're looking at the cash outflow, and sometimes that can be one to two years, where looking at 10 years was, I think, a good move on doing that.
And it makes it difficult because we're looking at return on investment from two years back, so we're...
Yes, that is true about the pension. The information in the June 17 financial statements is as of June 16, in order to compile that large amount of information and do all of the actual reports for all of the plans for everybody impurs, time-consuming, so that is true.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for all the work you did for us as well.
Thanks.
Councilor Mosby.
If Mr. Wilkie is going to, is this the time to have discussion about any of the, in the audit report?
Sure.
On other items and other areas?
That was really the presentation, so if there's other questions you have, I'll certainly entertain them, but I may not be able to give you an answer right now. But one thing that I'd like to suggest is if there are things like that that are more detailed in request, that we are doing the mid-year review coming up in the first meeting in April, and it would be a good lead-in to that presentation to talk about some of the differences in the '16-'17 budget process leading into the '17-'19 budget process.
My main concern here was about this book. I haven't been able to communicate with you fully, but with Mr. Albro, I was, with some of the corrections that I had found, and if we were going to see an update of this book with the corrections was my question.
I'm sure he's taken note of your identifications, and this book is published, so that what we would be able to do is to address those changes in the next cycle, so...
One was kind of important about the pension number. You had 2.7 at 55 or 2.7 at 57. There was a, identified differently in two different places, so it was kind of a significant one.
Right, but like I...
Nothing with, I found nothing in the mathematical computations. I'm not...
Right, and to be honest, when I went through the '13 audit report and the '15 audit report, there's always places to find that where we can improve on what we did last year. But right now, this is what was distributed to our bond entities. So, to change this at this point in time for the prior year, typically, that's not done unless there's a significant material difference in what was reported than what was supposed to be reported. So, I think some of those things that are what you're mentioning, which are not necessarily typos, but are a lesser level, I think, would be causing more of a concern at the bond investor level than we would want to display.
Right, no, I'm not, don't want to do that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, going to move on to the City Manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. We received news today that the city's water, and speaking of bonds, the city's water and wastewater refunding revenue bonds have successfully closed today. So, the refunding bonds will save the two utilities an average of about 9.3% annually through the remaining terms of those refunded bonds. On another note, Insight Mission to Mars is a launch to Mars from Vandenberg Air Force Base on May 5, and the city has partnered with Explore Lompoc and Jet Propulsion Labs, Lockheed Martin, ULA, NASA, and the 30th Space Wing to provide a viewing area for the launch at the Lompoc Airport. And that'll be on May 5 at 4:00 in the morning, so there'll be a designated space there for people to go ahead and see that historic moment. And also, on another note, as you are aware, we are aware that there's construction debris from the railroad project that is being, is on property, railroad property at Laurel NV, and we just wanted to make sure that, you know, we are aware of that, and we have contacted the railroad about cleaning that up. It is their intent to do so, although we don't have a timeframe yet that they have let us know they're going to be doing that. So, just wanted you to know, we have been in contact with them. And then, this Saturday is the second Dance Lompoc Competition, and our very own Fire Chief Curious and Police Captain Clement are dancing for a good cause, so cheer them on. It's great to see them involved in that.
All right. Councilor Starbuck.
You think the chief would give a little preview now?
Okay, we're going to move on now to consent calendar, but before we move on, our Human Resources Manager, Gabe Garcia, has a few comments on item number four.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of the council, audience and the audience watching at home. There's a couple of deletions on some job position numbers that we want to make. There were programming errors. So, the first deletion is on the Civil Engineering Associate III, job number 158. There's a 2.5% education incentive. That needs to be deleted, so we'd like to make note of that tonight. And then, also on job number 666, which is the Principal Civil Engineer, and the 2.5% education incentive and the 5% education incentive, we'd like to note that those need to be deleted as well. And those are the only deletions we have on Attachment 8.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now, we're going to have public comment on the consent calendar. This is your opportunity to speak to us for up to three minutes. Anything on the consent calendar? Okay, seeing no one rise, we'll close public comment, and we'll break it back to the council. Councilor Starbuck.
I'll move you accept the consent calendar.
With the noted changes?
With noted changes in item.
And I'll second that with the noted changes.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Let's vote. And that passes 5-0. Thank you. Okay, staff presentation. It's Chief Walter. Captain, okay. We've promoted you for the evening. We're going to do a little staff presentation on the school safety. I mean, it's been in the news lately, and if any of you are parents, grandparents, we're all concerned, so...
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, fellow staff members, and members of the community. I'm Captain Joe Mariani. I'm the commanding officer of Support Services for the Lompoc Police Department, and acting on behalf of our Chief of Police, who's on a well-deserved vacation. So, there's been a major concern lately with school site safety, given some of the incidents that have occurred, most recently, the tragic incident that occurred several weeks ago at a high school in Florida. And when something like that happens, it causes a great deal of consternation, not only in that community but throughout the whole nation, and especially when we look at our own community. We have to be very vigilant and take measures to ensure the safety of our most valuable resource in our community, which is our youth. So, here in Lompoc, we have had a longstanding commitment to our youth here from the perspective or from the commitment of the police department. And a key component to school site safety is, first of all, to have a good partnership with your school district. And it's no mystery, and we're very pleased with the relationship that we enjoy with the Lompoc Unified School District, as the Assistant Superintendent earlier mentioned. When I arrived here three years ago, I was really impressed with the fact that we have this ongoing relationship with our school district. And one of the key components that we have to school site safety is the fact that we have a longstanding program with our school resource officers. So, we've had school resource officers deployed at Lompoc Unified School District, schools, primarily the high school, for several decades. We are currently, we have a vacancy in that position, but we have backfilled... We are currently, we have a vacancy in that position, but we have backfilled that position until we make that selection. And that's a really critical selection, because we have to select the right person to take on that role, because the school resource officer is responsible for establishing a partnership with the administrators, the students making presentations, being involved in the discipline committee, and investigating events or crimes on a school site. So following the, the event that we had in Florida, of course, one of the things that we do is, as a department, is that we debrief those incidents and look at the tactics and look at things that we could do, and given the fact that that information is readily available through the media and through social media, we make a real committed and timely effort to go over those incidents, and officers discuss that during briefings. In addition to that, we are currently engaged regularly in the school safety committees. So we make presentations, we are constantly involved in monitoring drills at our local schools, and here in Lompoc, our school site administrators do a great job. Both Sergeant Martin, who heads our community relations section and is responsible for the SRO program, he and I routinely participate in those drills. We've had a little different change of, of mindset in what we do in terms of our presentations regarding schools, school site threats or active shooter drills. For several years, what we did in law enforcement is we would show up at a school and we would deploy and do a tactical exercise, and that's great, but the truth is that the, the real need is for school sites to, to develop a plan or to develop a course of action to protect students in the event of one of these incidents. And several years ago, Sergeant Martin was able to identify a great program that's being used nationwide. It's called the ALICE program, and ALICE stands for Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Counter, and Evacuate. So what we did is we sent two of our officers, our, our school resource officers at the time, to undergo this training. They came back and they've been providing the, uh, training at these school sites, and this is an ongoing thing. And what that does is the program is, it focuses on what students and teachers and administrators need to do in the event of a shooting to minimize the loss of life and injury and to promote some vehicle for escape. In addition to that, all of our officers are required to undergo active shooter training, and we're about to have an active shooter training in, in the next couple of months for all of our officers, including command staff. The other thing that's really important and a key component to school site safety is that we constantly maintain communication with our administrators on emerging issues or problems that could be perceived threats to students at schools. And following the incident in Florida, where there was a series of threats, some that were replicated and duplicated, some that were probably exacerbated by social media, we, we took some of those threats here as well in, in Lompoc. We, we vetted them. One of the other things that we've done is we have maintained a liaison and a rapport with our local FBI office to assess these, these threats in a timely manner, and if it rises to a level that involves federal involvement, they've committed to assist us in that. The other thing that we do is that we continuously maintain dialogue with our neighboring law enforcement jurisdictions. And last week, we had a bomb threat incident at a, at a school bus stop as a result of one of our local buses, bus drivers located an item that we fully deployed on with the assistance of officers from the Federal Correction Institute, because it was on their, on near their grounds as well. The Sheriff Department Bomb Squad responded, as well as our officers, in a coordinated effort, we came to a successful conclusion of that incident. But this is an ongoing thing that we all need to do, is constantly share best practices, share timely information to minimize the threat of violence at schools.
Any questions for the captain? Okay, well, thank you very much for everything you do, your officers do, and keep our kids safe.
Thank you.
Okay. Oral communication. This is your opportunity to speak to us for up to three minutes on anything that can come before this council.
Good evening, Mayor Lingo, council members. My name is Rob Trailer, and I'm a member of the Economic Development Committee, many of whose members are here this evening. I'm also the chair of a policy subcommittee. That subcommittee was created for the express purpose of improving our ability to advise and make recommendations to you as council. Last month, the city published a city manager recruitment survey. The EDC members have completed the survey individually, and we would also encourage the rest of the community to share their input as well. It's a four-question survey. It doesn't take long to complete, and you can find a link to that survey on the homepage of the city's website. Having said that, the committee thought it was important to share our feedback directly with you, with a focus on the second and third questions of the survey. And to be clear, this isn't a compare and contrast exercise regarding any previous city manager. It's a look forward to the desired skills, traits, and abilities of Lompoc's next city manager. So when you're poring over the list of candidates, please consider the following. Lompoc needs a city manager with a track record of transformational leadership with quantifiable results. We need a city manager that's willing to recognize and embrace a new approach to promoting the city, not only the arts and flowers of the past, but the wine and cannabis of the future. We need a city manager who is willing to make a connection with the residents of Lompoc through current communication platforms, someone who will face, oh, sorry, someone who will facilitate the sharing of information, someone who will push without the fear of pushback, and finally, someone who will empower the city staff to find ways to say yes, not to be satisfied with the easy and safe answer of no. We need a culture of progress, responsiveness, and adaptiveness within the city staff. We believe that culture can be created by an effective leader. As you know, the EDC is composed of a wide cross-section of a community with an incredibly diverse skill set. If we can be of any additional assistance in the hiring or recruiting process, please don't hesitate to engage us. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
My name is Lorraine Waldau, and my husband Wally and I have been residents, very happily, of Lompoc since... Um, Wally? Was that way? That's my husband, Wally. I'm also serving this year as the president of the Lompoc Valley Democratic Club, but we're here tonight not to share something partisan with you. We're very glad to hear of the safety report and the working with our schools, but Lompoc will be one of 440 communities worldwide who will be supporting the students that are leading the march for our lives in Washington. And so we are here as parents, grandparents, we are working with community organizations, the churches, the schools, to pull together support here in Lompoc. There's also a march or rally planned in San Luis Obispo and one down in Santa Barbara, and so we are the midpoint for support for this event. So it's going to be, along with the rest of the world, on March 24th, from 1:00 to 2:30 here in Lompoc on the corner of H and Ocean, and so I just wanted to bring that, and I also brought a companion sheet on the impact of gun violence on American children and teens, and so just wanted to give you that information.
Okay, well, thank you very much, ma'am.
Deb Andrews, Mission Hills. The suggestion of a city council code of conduct is more accurately termed city council code of compliance. The compliant Los Angeles City Council is instructive. The LA Deferred Retirement Option Plan, or DROP, allows officers to draw salary and pension payments simultaneously. LA police and fire officers enrolled in the DROP plan take extended injury leaves while continuing to collect both payments. Change was needed to stem the flow of dollars out the door. The reform measures of the DROP plan was introduced by Council President Eric Garcetti and passed the council 11 to 0 in 17 seconds. It was signed by Mayor Antonio Villarosa. That drop reform measure, which took 17 seconds to introduce and pass unanimously, required that enrollees be on active duty one day before they went out on leave, the day they enrolled in the DROP program. The elected officials all worked cooperatively with staff recommendations. There was movement and accomplishment. It was passed. But the citizens lost. There will be less money available for services. Officers can collect $1.5 million in five years in the DROP program. LA has a homeless population of 60,000 people. Garcetti is now mayor, and Villarosa is a candidate for governor of California. We don't need compliance. Citizens need elected officials who represent us. Every proposal and decision should be thoroughly vetted as to the long-term effect on citizens and revenue. Questions, debate, disagreements can get intense. We need that. The fate of our city, state, and nation are determined by decisions that you make today. Homelessness is increasing 14% per year in California. According to US News, California, beautiful state of California, ranked dead last, 50 out of 50 states in quality of life. The homelessness explosion is the face of bad government. We owe a great debt to those council members who question, disagree, dissent, and challenge staff on citizens' behalf. I urge you to follow their lead and hire a non-compliant city manager who will prioritize citizen services in a manner that is efficient, effective, and transparent.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, council. Good evening, audience. I would just like to bring up the topic that I haven't seen here at this council lately, and I would like to see it, and that is the topic of net neutrality, something that I personally hold dear to my heart, because growing up in the generation I did, I grew up and I watched the internet evolve into a, a form of information that, at this point in current time, our society cannot function without. Something I would like to bring up to all the city council members here is, I would like to bring up the fact that we have everything needed in place to lay down fiber optics, and I think it would be a great business opportunity if we had someone, or at least had someone look into, the possibility of laying down fiber optics in the city of Lompoc. Now, the reason for me saying this as a big business opportunity is you will now be competing as a resource, just like our water, just like our electricity, against other ISPs in our area, internet service providers in our area. We, the citizens, therefore, could own our own internet service providers. We could be our own providers in our own small community, providing internet service at a much lower rate with much faster speeds, up to a gig per second. To put that into retrospect, 2 gigabytes is about what you would find a standard two-hour movie, and you would be able to download that as fast as I'm talking right now. Currently, our speeds here in Lompoc are pretty atrocious. We get maybe up to 200 megabytes per second, which in return, kind of reflects on our ability to effectively communicate as a community. With growing technology, we can grow our community, and when we grow our community, we can use that and implement that to help citizens' life and our culture expand. It's just something I'd like to personally bring up. I hope, when you do get the chance, that each and every one of you will research a little bit into it, maybe we can get started on the topic of having a city-wide broadband internet service. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Ron Bishow. I am a resident of Lompoc Valley for 30-some-odd years. I'm here to have the council think about the cannabis buffer zone map, the newest development with the, adding the dance studios, and I see a couple of the comments from one of the dance studios here that I'd like you to consider. The dance studios, as we know from the last meeting, doesn't cater 100% of their business to children, and they have very limited hours. You try and reach them on the phone during the day, they're not there. This one particular statement that's here has to do with the property that's over on J Street, and they're in close proximity to several establishments, that they're 100% of their business is to serve alcohol. So it's my feeling, I think if you go to plan these dance studios, you can say the same thing about doctor's offices. You know, you don't want a cannabis dispensary next to a doctor's office, because the majority of their patients are minors. That's pretty much all I have to say. So I don't think there's, you know, most of the dance studios, the parents are, if their, if their kids are there, they're being supervised by their parents, whereas you have a preschool, high school, elementary school, those schools, the kids are there from 8 to 3 or 8 to 5. Preschool is pretty common to be 7 to 5. They're actually taking care of the children, where this is not 100% catered to the minors, just like any other place. So that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else? Seeing no one rise, we're gonna close oral communication, and we're gonna go to the public hearing. Item number five is a public hearing to consider Measure A, five-year local program of projects for fiscal years 2018 through 2023.
Thank you. I'm Craig Dearling with the City of Lompoc Engineering Division, and I'd like to thank you all for taking the time this evening to consider how Measure A provides critical funding for our street infrastructure and operations. This item includes the city's five-year program of projects, which is required to be adopted each spring prior to receiving our Measure A funding allocation. Measure A is the largest, the city's largest source of road revenue, as you can see at the bottom, about 50%, whoops, there we go. About 50% of the city's road revenue comes from Measure A, and there's the other existing sources for, as of fiscal year 1819. Road funds serve many uses, and those uses primarily fall into two categories, citywide operations and capital projects. The citywide operations are the things the street division, urban forestry division, and engineering division do, such as patching and sealing and managing street pavement, repairing and upgrading sidewalks and concrete, street trees and vegetation, and so on. Capital projects, on the other hand, are the, the specific projects that extend useful life. They rehabilitate pavement or upgrade infrastructure. Here's a photo of operations. They're citywide, all year, all the time, but don't necessarily add useful life, they just keep things working. Here's a photo of a capital project, a specific location, somewhat higher unit cost, so they're limited in scope and timing. So a complete street program would have both components, operations and capital projects. So you see photos of some operations on the left and capital project on the right. As mentioned in the staff report, road needs exceed revenues. Because road needs have exceeded available revenues, the city has already significantly reduced operations as well as... reduced operations as well as capital. Without operations, as we showed, the daily immediate needs can't be met, and without capital projects, pavement condition and the condition of other street infrastructure Currently, the city's pavement condition index averages a 56 and a 61 excluding alleys. The average overall goal for the city's street network is 70. That's like an industry standard goal. So we're a little below that. Over the past 10 years, this graph shows, in the bars, in the orange bars, the annual capital project pavement expenditures, and in the red line, the actual citywide average PCI. So as you can see, since needs have exceeded revenues, the PCI has dropped, even though expenditures in some years have been significant. In certain years, we've been able to keep the PCI either level or slightly increase it through some cost-effective measures. We can discuss a little more later. Here's a graph of the next 10 years depending upon expenditure level, with the bottom red line being no expenditures, the orange line being 1 million a year at, using industry standard practices, and the green line at 5 million per year. As you can see, the PCI does drop. However, once we get close to the amount necessary to keep, to maintain pavement at its current level, the PCI could be even. So I think we said in the staff report, 6 million per year, and this line could be flat. Here's just some photos of what different PCIs look like. The 72 is pretty close to the desired goal for a citywide network average. 58 is just above where we're at now, on average. And down here on the right, 43 is one of the estimates of where we could be in 10 years. Measure A in road revenues. The city's pavement management system reports to get up to an overall average PCI of 70 citywide, using industry standard methods, we'd need $42 million as a one-time expenditure, and then to keep it there, 7 million per year. And using all existing revenues, we currently have 650,000 to 1 million per year. That's with the SB1 funding that just was approved last year. So those expenditures are shown in the program of projects attached to the staff report, and we'll show it on our table coming up here in the presentation in the row that's called "overlays and rehabilitation." Citywide, street, urban forestry, and engineering division operations require most of the road funds, as shown in the table of the staff report, and we'll show it here, too. But thankfully, because of some new revenue from Senate Bill 1, as well as some reductions in street operation costs, up to about 30%, the city can now resume funding of capital projects up to that 650 to 1 million per year level that I mentioned. And here are the tables that are also in the staff report, that basically show on the top the existing street revenue sources, and on the bottom, needs. And just like to illustrate, in the yellow here, here's the new funding from SB1 that was passed last year. It starts small and then grows to about a million estimated in 1920, and then I think 1.2 or 1.3 in the next year. So as that grows, we are able to use a little bit of past savings plus that new revenue to resume our capital projects shown here. Next line below that is the rest of the capital projects it would take to keep our PCI level. So this is an unfunded line, but the yellow here is what we can do, thanks to SB1 and the operational savings we've achieved. This is a photo of a cost-effective capital project we did in 2013, and we're glad for every opportunity we have to use our limited funding to significantly improve pavement and service to our residents. So though available funding is substantially below the desired level, we'll keep using the most cost-effective strategies we can to maximize improvement. Some of those cost-effective strategies, like I mentioned last time, operationally, we continue to strive to improve efficiency in operations, to keep infrastructure safe and usable. And due to declining revenues, we have kept many positions vacant and reduced operational costs by about 30%. On the capital side, we plan to continue a number of cost-effective pavement treatments like were shown in that previous slide, which extend the useful life at several times less cost than traditional industry standard methods. Staff has also scheduled different types of those cost-effective treatments sequentially so that we can get a long-lasting improvement through that, through the combination of those So now we're getting into the program of projects spreadsheet that was an attachment to the staff report. This first page is the left side of that program showing actual expenditures in fiscal year 1617. So we show in the top row, street maintenance division, next, engineering, and so on, overlays and rehab, urban forestry, and on down. This next part is the, kind of the top middle portion, the main part of the program of projects. So in the top row here, we're showing the carryover we have to the current fiscal year, and then each year after that, it's the carryover to that fiscal year. So they don't all add together. It's just kind of a running, a running carryover. And the second row, we have the estimates we received from SB CAG for revenue for each fiscal year. And down below, we have programmed expenditures, like we showed before, street maintenance, engineering division. Here, because of the addition of SB1 funding and the operational savings we've achieved, we're able to program somewhere between 650 and a million dollars annually for overlays and rehab. We have them shown here every other year. And that's just in order to keep things cost-effective and to get the size of the project that gives us a good unit price. With our level of funding, it works better that way. Then we have a few other road-related projects. Down at the bottom, bike and ped facilities, that we'll touch on a little more in the next slide, and then cold operations as needed to meet Fairbox ratios. Measure A requires the city spend 15% of its local street and transportation improvement allocation on alternative transportation. Now, that's discussed a little more in the staff report. We project to receive about 11 and a half million over the five-year period, the current five-year reporting period. And 15% of that is, 15.1% of that is about 1.7 million. So that's what we're shooting for to meet our 15%. So then, in closing, the city needs to adopt a program of projects to receive its allocation of Measure A funds for fiscal year 1819 so that we can continue our critical road operations and capital projects. Therefore, staff is recommending we hold a public hearing, consider the proposed program, and adopt Resolution 6163, adopting the program or provide alternate direction. I'm open for any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Dearling? Councilman Mosby.
Do you have a map of the PCI?
I don't have one in the PowerPoint, no.
Okay. I asked this question about a year or so ago about the PCI map, because there's a couple blocks on there, several blocks, that we have PCIs of zero. And zero is pretty much, what, impassable or four-wheel-drive-only or what?
Well, it doesn't necessarily mean four-wheel-drive-only, but it means the pavement has failed and is at the end of its useful life.
Because some of these blocks you drive on and you don't, you know, you don't have any problem traversing them. I've seen a lot of streets that have higher rankings on that map, where the zeros seem like there's an anomaly, or they fell off the charts, or something happened with that. Is there, do you guys go out and check every block every year, or what do you, how do you guys determine this?
Not every year. Periodically, it's a very labor-intensive process. So periodically, the streets are reviewed, and the focus is first on the busier streets that deteriorate the fastest, arterials, collectors, and higher-volume streets, and residential and alleys are reviewed less frequently than those busier streets.
Yeah. I mean, some of these streets are completely passable that are marked as zeros. So I think it's, you know, something needs to be updated or something like that, because it would boost the number up significantly. When you add a zero in and you're doing your calculations, you significantly skew the outcome.
Right, yeah. And it doesn't mean that it's impassable. It just means it has distresses that create a rating of zero.
Well, one of these had a seal code on it, maybe within the last three to four years. So it doesn't seem like, I mean, that should have brought it up over a zero, I would think. So maybe you have an opportunity to review that again. Not saying to do it now. I understand where we're going now, but I think that we maybe need to do a little review on, not the whole thing, but definitely those that are looking towards the bottom end. I know we have some alleys that are definitely zeros. There's no doubt about that. But some of these streets, I don't think really are at that level. I leave it up to you to go out there and investigate. But the other thing is, we seem to spend a lot more of our Measure A money on urban forestry than the other communities around us do. Is there a reason for that?
I can't really speak to that one. I'm not sure what other communities do, and I'm not in charge of that division.
I mean, besides, other funding mechanism would be general fund, which, of course, our general fund is so stretched thin that we have to get it from somewhere, right? And I know in our communications with the Beautification Commission and such, they're making big movements to get rid of some of the trees that have been nuisances and stuff, and that should reduce a lot of that. You know, it's a big chunk of money, half a million dollars a year in urban forestry that, it looks like they're proactively working to reduce that to help, you know, with more of the Measure A money, right? Do you see a movement that way, or?
We hope so, yeah. We hope that the elimination of those problem trees can bring that number down.
And when the SB CAG report comes out, I think you guys get to see it as well, but it references all the other communities, and it gives you, you know, dollars and percentages that are spent towards urban forestry and other items, and are just pointing out that we are probably the highest in the county as a percentage going towards urban forestry with our Measure A money. So it might be a pot that we can, we'll soon be coming more revenue our way. I know it's going to be, well, the numbers you're showing right here, it's going to look pretty gloomy in another five or seven years or something, right?
Well, we're hoping to, we're hoping to do better than that with our cost-effective measures. We'll see what we can do.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Public comment. Seeing no one rise, we're going to close public comment, bring it back to the council. All entertain a motion. Councilman Mosby.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Let's vote. And that passes 5-0. Okay. Moving on to item number six, which is a council request, discussion, and direction whether dance studios are to be considered youth centers for buffer zones. Mr. Penoni.
Thank you, Mayor. You'll recall at your February 20th meeting, when we were talking about introducing an ordinance to make some changes, you had asked for a review of the inclusion of dance studios as youth centers. So what we did is, we prepared a staff report to indicate that there are five dance studios that we have located. The dance studios in contact, we contacted the dance studios, and the concern you had is whether or not there were sufficient youth services being provided there to consider them youth centers. And we did, made some phone calls and asked them what their business were in terms of how many youth they served and how much adult they served. And there's a chart on the page that, on page two of the staff report, that indicates all of them were at least 80% serving minors, some as many as 98% of their time. Based on that, I believe that youth centers, the definition of youth centers would include these dance studios, but you, as a city council, can determine otherwise. I believe that they are inclusive because they're, youth centers, as you know, have to primarily be used to host recreational and social activities for youths. And it seems to me that that's what a dance studio is, but you could have a different perspective and determine otherwise. I'm not playing with you, just go to the map. This is the, this shows the buffers, if the dance studios are included, and this shows, Sorry for the technical difficulties. And this shows the areas for, that would be included because if the dance studios aren't included as buffer zones, the major differences are here and here. So with that information, I'm here to answer questions you have.
Questions from Mr. Penoni. Councilman Mosby.
In your chart in the staff report, did you consider the number of hours they're open per week in there, or was that just?
In that survey that we did initially, we did not. But because of a question that you had asked in my office, we again made a phone call to find out what, how often the studios were open for use. Lompoc School of Dance, which is at 311F, is open Mondays through Thursdays, 3 to 9, and Saturdays, 12 to 7. Valley Dance Alliance, which is at 1100 Ocean, is open Mondays through Thursdays, 4:30 to 7, and Saturdays, 10 to 2. That one, really, really doesn't matter with that one because of where it's located. It's located near the Boys and Girls Club, so the buffer, it really doesn't change the buffer. Alley Project, we didn't get response to when we called, and, or we didn't get response from a classic school of ballet either. And on Garcia Dance Studio, they're open Mondays through Thursdays, 4 to 8. And that's the one at 1,006H.
Anyone else? Councilman Starbuck.
You know, Mr. Penoni, I'm just going to kind of make a comment here. I think that we may be overreaching with our definition of youth center here. These hours that they're showing open, I'm going to take a guess that when my kids were in dance, it was typically a one-hour type of a thing. So there may be three or four different classes happening for an hour apiece. The road that we're going down right now would almost qualify PJ's Deli as a youth center because it's done with nothing but high school kids. Deli as a youth center, because it's done with nothing but high school kids from 11:35 to 12:35. So if all the high school kids go there to get a sandwich, is that now considered a youth center? They're eating, and in the afternoon, they dance. So I think we're actually stretching it with Mia Moore, as far as video machines. That's for kids' parties that are supervised by adults, not kids walking in there as a traditional arcade like we think. I just, it seems like we're just putting delay, delay, we're changing maps. I don't think that this youth center qualifies when you go on to the state's guidance, you know, Business and Profession Codes. The definition is not there. None of these were built specifically as a social outlet for kids and other things.
Any other questions from Mr. Penoni? Councilmember Osborne.
So, the last thing I want to do is start defining what a youth center is, and creating a list that says these are definitively what they are, because the terminology used in the California Code of Health and Safety is very broad, and so much of this fits in it. Now, there was a group in town that wanted to be a youth center, and they went through an application process to qualify and be deemed a youth center. Is that a process that instead of us determining what locally we consider fits the description of the Health and Safety Code, that instead puts it on to these organizations, that if they want to be deemed a youth center, they could do the same as the church did?
The church didn't file an application, just to make sure the record's correct. The church didn't file an application for becoming a youth center. What they did is, they believed that they met the definition of youth center, and they provided me information, documents, pictures, and program showing whether or not, showing the types of activities that primarily that place was used for, and that place is that the, a communication center is primarily used for youth recreation and social activities. So, based on that information, I determined, and I think you agreed, that that particular building was considered a youth center. If we provided an option for any organization, whether it's a dance school or a karate club, or whatever, to submit something to the city, saying we want to be a youth center, and therefore will determine it a youth center, my concern with that is, whenever you make land use kinds of decisions, you have to base it on a rational basis. And my concern would be, if there's two dance studios, since we're focusing on dance studios, if there's two dance studios that basically are doing the same thing, and one says, "I want to be a youth center," and the other one doesn't say they want to be a youth center, my concern is someone could challenge our determination of the one that wants to be a youth center is, or the one that didn't ask isn't. If there's really no rational basis for differentiating between the two, then whoever brought that challenge would be successful.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Mr. Penoni. Let's help for public comment.
Good evening, Mayor Langill. Councilmembers, my name is Rob Trailer. I'm a Lompoc resident. Commercial cannabis operations live and die with local control, and the sword cuts both ways. So while some California cities have pressed their right to ban commercial cannabis, others have elected to cultivate, pun intended, a new industry. With respect to the issue of setbacks and sensitive uses, local jurisdictions are permitted to adjust the setbacks to meet the needs of the community. And as you discuss this topic, please look past the percentages in the staff report that don't even provide raw numbers, and consider the brief hours of operation, and the density of available parcels by zoning type, and the myriad of existing state laws and regulations in place for the protection of minors. I spent a portion of the day staring at my computer screen in wonder, as I progressed through the various iterations of the setback maps, and I can only imagine the potential business owner's anxiety associated with outcome here. As I speak, there are potential licensees that have current leases on empty storefronts, who have commercial properties in escrow. The viability of their business plans hinge on the outcome of your decisions. Make no mistake, this issue has an impact on the economic development of Lompoc. We can either choose to exclude entrepreneurs, or you could welcome them. I recommend the latter. And with as much as I prefer to not compare the evils of alcohol and cannabis, not only because the danger posed by one pales in comparison to the other, but also because the regulatory schemes are entirely different, there was a written communication submitted with the agenda that makes an interesting point. The author suggests, and I quote, "Concerned parents wouldn't likely, would likely not want to sign up their child at a dance studio that is a close neighbor to a bar serving alcohol, or a business selling marijuana." And I consider it nothing short of ironic, that if a 600-foot setback was placed around 124 South J Street, there'd be a big blue dot covering Johnny's Bar and Grill, Sissy's Uptown Cafe, Sushi Terry, Angela's Restaurant, and soon, Hanger 7, and I've probably missed some, all of which make alcohol readily available to adults. Yet, the 50-year-old Classical School of Ballet survives. It's truly a miracle of capitalism. And as I've said before, if we're really gonna do it for the children, I would highly encourage you to consider permitting dispensaries in industrial zones. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Hello, I would just like to bring up the topic. I see here that there's a 600-to-1,000-foot buffer zone. Personally speaking, it's gonna exclude a lot more businesses. It would be a smarter decision to actually lower that buffer zone to maybe 3, 300, 200. You would exclude more business the larger that zone is. There are already measures in place. Before you can even walk into a walk-in dispensary, you actually have two separate rooms. You have a room where you have to walk in, before you walk into the dispensary, where you are then greeted by a professional, a bud tender, and a doctor, and they ask you whether or not they have your card. They have to legally check to see if that card is valid or not, before they allow you into their dispensary. Then they allow you, you have to pick out whatever items that you're going to be getting, and then you go through a process. Now, I would like to compare this similar to some current gun laws that we have. Well, when you have someone who needs to buy a gun, there is a very long process involved with that. Well, the same is for walk-in dispensaries with cannabis. No children are gonna be walking into a dispensary, anyone, the security guard out front, the bud tender, before you walk in, and the doctor, who has to check your recommendation, will all notice if there is someone who's under 21 walking into a dispensary. It seems like a very large buffer zone for a problem that doesn't seem to be very large. I do believe that cannabis should be out of the hands of children. Now, what we can do for that specifically, is we can actually define what a social activity place is for children. I would define it simply because if you don't, you are gonna get a lot of backlash coming from business, you're gonna get a lot of backlash coming from concerned parents. The easiest way to define it is to come up with a number. How many hours are they operating? How many of those operating hours are children present? For schools, it's 100% of the time, 100% of the time they're operating, there are 100% of children there. Awesome. They are in the exclusion list. Now, with the dance studio, why don't we calculate the amount of time that children are there, compared to the amount of time that everyone is there, that we service adults? And if that number goes above 40%, 50%, well, then we can define it as an exclusion zone. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Mayor, councilmembers, my name is Cameron Porter. I come here today as a community leader, as a businessperson, and someone that has just recently invested in Lompoc to hopefully become a cannabis operator. I also come here today as a father of two, and I clearly understand the need for the sensitive use. However, I really feel strongly that you guys are overreaching here. Proposition 64 was never intended to be interpreted this way. There have been many other cities that have gone down this road, that have dropped the dance studio discussion because of this very situation. And I would strongly urge the council to remove that portion from this ordinance, if at all possible. And I know that may not be what actually occurs. And what I would like to recommend, if that's not possible, is to look at some sort of common ground. You have, you have locations that the city attorney has just simply called on, one phone call in the middle of a dance studio, to ask them questions that none of us actually even heard what the questions were phrased. How were they phrased? How was it set up to get the information from these businesses? I think the onus is on the business. If the business feels that they're a candidate, and they want to be considered a youth center, there should be an avenue for them to come to the city and say, "Here's, here's some empirical information. Here's some data about my studio, about the times that I operate, how many youth I have there, and this is the reason that I need this, this to be classified as a youth center." And conversely, I think the opposite should occur for studios that don't want to be included. They should have the same opportunity, say, "You know what? That this organization, this cannabis operator, is coming next door to my facility, and I choose that it's okay that they're there." I personally have spoke with some of the studios that you mentioned that did not advocate to become a youth center, and they welcome us because of some of the security things that we are going to be putting in place in our, in this community, to help drive out some of the things that actually deter their business, such as homelessness, drug and alcohol abuse, and all sorts of other things that occur right in front of the children, that are much more harmful and impactful to the youth than operators like us that are trying to do our best to fit into the community, and also bring eventually new revenue to the community. And after sitting through the meeting tonight, I'm, it's really hard for me to see how we can be pushing out opportunity to generate revenue for the city. Obviously, the ordinance right now, thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmen, people of the meeting. I'm here on behalf of Northside Shopping Center and the Bears. I'm the property manager for that location, and they're on the road right now, taking care of their mother. But they just asked me to come and speak on their behalf, as far as the local business owners that we have in our complex. As a few people have spoke out, they have hard enough time keeping their businesses full, as is. We have a couple spaces over there that are vacant. And two, to reiterate on the point where these dance studios and karate studios were reached out to, not necessarily that it was their point of concern that they reached out to the city, actually to the point where we have talked to them, like Cameron said, and they're more for it than against it. They want that extra security. Me, being the property manager, I see multiple issues. I mean, threats from local drug use, and alcohol, and homelessness. I mean, I personally firsthand, on, you know, feet on the ground, receive those threats. I would feel a lot safer as that property manager with an armed security guard on staff. Sorry, I'm not very good at public speaking, but that's where, as speaking for the property managers, and my, I mean, property owners, and the managers myself, kind of where we sit, I think it should be, I could see if it was a government dance studio, or a school, that's a government entity. But if it's a private dance studio, or a private karate school, those people have the, there's four different dance studios. They have the chance, if they want, they could pull out of that one, and they could go to another. It's a private, it's a private studio. I mean, that's same as any other private business. If they don't like the location, or what's going on, they always have the option to do business elsewhere. But if, obviously, if it's not that big an issue to them, they'll continue going to that school, or to that, that location. So, like, as the property manager and the owners were for it, and I've talked to James Parsons from the Kempo Studio and Laura, they've both written letters saying that they're for it, and they're not opposed to it. So that's just where we stand as the property owners for that.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Good evening, I'm Ryan Brigham. I'm a local resident of Lompoc. I just see, every time I come and I look at these maps, it's just more and more added to it. You know, there's just more blue bubbles, everything's just getting covered up. So if you've approved the cannabis businesses coming into Lompoc, then why does it seem like you're, you're trying to squeeze them out? I don't, every time I see that map, it just looks less and less places for them to go. So I feel like you are going a little bit overboard on your overreach, and I want them to come here, because I like them, and I, I think they bring jobs and a lot of money, and they do have a lot of access control. So you can't just walk into one. Like everybody's saying, you have security guards, and you have all these things that you have to do just to get in. So, I mean, it's not like just an open door. You have to, they'll check you, and they'll, they'll make sure you're legit, and then you can go inside. But as far as I see, it's just, you guys approve it, and then you turn around, you come back, and then it's just something, again, that comes up, that just seems like, you say yes, but then at the same time, you're saying no. It's like, which one is it? I don't, you know, I don't, it just seems like you guys are squeezing out everything. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you for taking the time to speak with us tonight. My first concern is the inconsistency. So, not to attack the city attorney, but one of the first things that was said was, you can't have a policy that doesn't apply to everybody. And one of the things that he said was, he was petitioned by them to add them as a sensitive use. So, are these petitioned? Are they not petitioned? Are they decided by the city, are they not? Where are the guidelines for any of this? So, my first question is, who's driving the bus? And as councilmembers, I thought you guys were in charge. And what I'm actually getting is, is staff is making these rules up as we go. And to echo some of the previous statement, every time we come up, there's more fundamental changes. And this isn't just a simple interpretation, or a line, or something, that effect, that was missed. This is an interpretation that's fundamentally changing this ordinance. And I'm just questioning why it's a give and take every time, and where we have to revisit this over and over again, because there's a new interpretation at every meeting. So this policy is unprecedented, and in fact, it's been refused in Grover Beach, when the dance studio did the same exact request, was as a youth center, and Grover Beach found that they weren't. So why here in Lompoc are we finding that we are? Why are we setting legal precedent? When we talk about trying to follow the laws, and not get into legalities, and litigation, and things like that, this has already been decided. Places like Los Angeles, places Oakland, and Grover Beach had this same exact specific issue. So when we talk about consistency, why are we different than what they are? My next concern is, where does this end? I mean, as defined, I can open a business for one hour per week, exclusive to children, and I can be identified as a youth center. Is that the intent of Prop 64? I believe, and I think most people would agree with me, that wasn't. The intention was never to be pick and choosing who can be a youth center, and who wasn't. So, the intent to protect schools, protect youth, and the clear operators that we've already defined in the original ordinance are the people that we're looking to protect, and we were clear about that. I'm also wondering if the opposition has considered the unintended consequences of eroding the city council's direction. So when every time this comes up, there's other conversations of removing the buffer zones, removing the 200 feet from 600 feet, those types of conversations, and that really is counterproductive to their challenge. It's counterproductive to the operators that are currently working and in leases. And I think that sooner or later, we need to get to a common sense approach, where if we're gonna go down this path, we have analytics, and data, and hours. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, and fellow citizens. My name is Rich Smith, Lompoc resident and a business owner. My name is Rich Smith, Lompoc resident and a business owner. I'm here tonight to ask the council to put to bed the issue of what a youth center is. Yeah, I'd like you guys to define it. Health and Safety Code defines a youth center as any public or private facility that's primarily used to host recreational or social activities. We've already covered that. I think we know what the definition of it is. And I'm going to be very honest here, and I think it's important because I think this is where the real issue is. You know, the city attorney made a unilateral decision on his own to include dance studios and karate facilities in the setback map, and that's a major overreach. And to be brutally honest, it's just another way for him to get some billable hours and to push a different agenda that the council doesn't want. And so I really think our city attorney needs to kind of be put in check a little bit because he's not in charge, he doesn't run the city, you guys do, and he answers to you. So I really think we need to address that issue. And so those facilities that are utilized for adults and children, which are dance studios, actually, let me, I'm just going to address this differently. You know, the spirit and intent of using that Health and Safety Code in Prop sixty-four was, you know, to ensure youth centers and youth-oriented places of businesses were not close to cannabis operations. That makes total sense where children have minimal adult supervision and are likely to solicit outside these places of business. In regards to dance studios and karate centers, this just doesn't happen. It doesn't. Also, these facilities tend to have very minimal hours, as we've heard tonight, and they service adults as well. If the city wants to further broaden the definition of a youth center, then I think the cannabis industry needs alternatives for business operations. Currently, industrial zones can only have manufacturing, distributing, and cultivation. We need to add retail storefronts to industrial if we're going to further limit our planned commercial development, OTC zoning, and convenience center zonings. And that's, I just really feel we're going against the free market approach that council had intended with this ordinance by further limiting the opportunities for cannabis operators. I intend to open four operations here in town. I'm a Lompoc resident. I was born and raised here. I intend to generate a minimum of 50 new jobs, all paying above minimum wage. I'm sitting here paying leases on empty buildings because I cannot get clear direction here from the city, and I hope that we can solve this issue tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Mosby first.
Real quick, I just, for the people out there, for the record, what the city attorney has proposed, not that it is, is is it or is it not? So that's, you know, there's two maps up here that he's given us. So, you know, in his defense, he's doing that our direction was asked, is it or is it not? So it's not all directed one way.
Go ahead, sir.
Well, how do I follow that, beside my name is Shiloh Belgard and I'm here in Lompoc? I've been up here a few times. I'm not dressed for the occasion, so I apologize for that. Just calling, I'm just coming up here to ask you how business is going for cannabis and how much revenue you guys have established this year. Because we should be establishing quite a bit, to be honest with you. I thought, I thought things were in order as this proposition was being made and being taken care of as we're coming up here. I thought people in the city were going ahead and working on it at least. And I called them up the other day, and I didn't have any answers of when I was going to be able to know when I would be able to get a license. It was just general questions because I don't actually plan on opening a business yet, but I do in the future, whenever that opportunity comes. But I do plan on working for somebody who does open up one here real soon. Maybe it's Richard, maybe it's the other gentleman who came up here also, but that's not happening. I've worked various other jobs, and I've done everything, and I just wanted, I just wanted to be able to go into something that I know that I will enjoy because I'm going to be able to help out people that need help, and also help educate and let people who are uncomfortable about it know that people who do smoke cannabis or use cannabis, CBD, or anything else of cannabis or hemp, aren't criminals and we aren't against you. We just have different views about different things that our government specifically has made us believe that is evil. And that's something that everybody needs to change, and I've said this time and time again. But I looked into some reviews and revenue reviews, and notice, just for instance, Las Vegas, you can't really compare what we're going to be making here to Las Vegas, but it's $30 million in six months that they pulled in here. Now, what I should be coming up here, you guys, and all these reports, we should be having some kind of, some kind of revenue report saying how much we pulled in off of this now that we have the chance in order to make this city better with the revenue that we are able to disperse to other programs, such as helping our homeless, supplying more help for our officers, both in the fire department and the police, coming together and being able to be a strong, well-oiled working machine like we're supposed to be in this time, in this day, because I would like to see it sooner than later, hopefully next week.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and council members and citizens of Lompoc. In defining a youth center, the Lompoc Valley Cannabis Coalition believes that the Lompoc City Council should use three factors in determining exactly what a youth center is. I've spoken with some of you about this, and I know that there's various opinions on some of the things that I've suggested, but I'm going to suggest them nonetheless. I think that when you define a business center, you should look at the business plan or model of that business. Was it the intention of the original business plan of a said business to be geared toward and specifically to youth, or a combination of youth and adults? I think that you need to look at the hours of operations. How long is this business open to the public specifically to the youth? Are we talking about a karate class that offers three classes for one hour, three times a week? Are we talking about a business that offers 40 hours of activities? And also, I think that the percentage of youth would also be brought into play, considering those other two factors. A policy in need is to define youth centers more clearly if businesses are just allowed to declare themselves youth centers. It creates a propensity that will be created that allows anti-cannabis individuals to create 600-foot buffer zones indiscriminately, and if property line to property line measurements are conducted, this could potentially devastate the entry from success or even access in the city of Lompoc. If the city is unwilling to remove dance studios, karate classes, and et cetera, as a youth center consideration and designation that does not meet some of the requested criteria suggested above, I ask that the city council reduce the buffer zones to 200 foot and 400 feet respectfully around these locations that are contested. It should be noted that other municipalities and local jurisdictions have also done this. In addition to the California Health and Safety Code regarding a video arcade, Miyamori Pizza was designated as a youth center. It was done so because it has more than 10 video arcades. However, in the statutory wording, it also states that "and where minors must be allowed to legally conduct business at such premises." Other speakers have noted that when you go into Miyamori Pizza, you're going in with an adult. You cannot walk in off the street and go into the video arcade. You must be a patron of the restaurant. Additionally, I would ask that you remove Miyamori Pizza from that designation. The current policy, I don't know if it's state, if it's a municipal policy, of measuring property line to property line, you have a place like Miyamori Pizza, which 600 feet extends across the entire shopping center that Miyamori's in, across the street, and across diagonally where Ross is at, including buildings over 1,000 feet away. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, council members. John Lynn, Lompoc resident. I didn't vote for it, but it did pass, and I believe that we're obligated to implement it in a reasonable way. We've talked repeatedly about being business friendly, and I would like you, for just a moment, to think about the people who came here and looked at any of the numerous prior maps and signed leases or made agreements that they are now bound to for one to five years to pay for a building that they may not be able to use. I respect the city attorney's opinion with regard to the possibilities that these could be considered youth centers, but I don't believe that they are. I think a youth center, we'll all agree, would be the Boys and Girls Club. They're open after school every day, on Saturday, on Sunday, when there's time, all the times that the kids are out, they're there. Similarly, the YMCA comes to mind, and I think you'll all recall the teen center we had across the street from the high school for many years. Those are youth centers in the purest sense. A dance studio, which is a part-time business, and I'm not knocking it, but it's different from the Boys and Girls Club. A karate studio, the Boxing Academy, Roy's Boxing Academy, for instance, those are different. Miyamori Pizza is different. They are not, in the classical sense, a youth center. They are a commercial business that caters to youth. I once ran a car stereo store, and I would say that probably 70% of my customers were under the age of 18, and they were in there all afternoon and all day Saturday. When we were open on Sunday, they were there on Sunday. And sometimes we felt like a youth center because we were kind of the hangout, but clearly we were not. So I hope this evening you will make this decision once and for all, and clear the air, and make sure that the Boys and Girls Club and the YMCA continue to be youth centers, and those things which are not purely youth centers are not. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, please. Okay, seeing no one rise, we're going to close public comment. Bring it back to the council. Discussion, recommendation? Councilmember Vega.
I've also done my own research on other cities and their implementation of youth centers, and I have to agree, one of the questions we asked from the city attorney was to find out hours of operation and whether clientele was mixed, if there was going to be supervision there. And we did get the answer. The response is, hey, they're pretty much part-time hours, very limited, they're not going to be unsupervised. So to go against a full-time operation versus part-time, I don't see any instance where the risk is going to exceed their use. So I look at the fact that dispensaries also are going to have security measures in place. After doing my own research, also, I noticed that you cannot just walk in without some sort of a security measure to any of these dispensaries. So I'd like to make a motion that we not include the dance studios and categorize them as youth centers.
Councilmember Osborne.
So I have to disagree. You read the exact California Code Health and Safety, 11353.1E2. Clear definition, as it states, youth center means any public or private facility that is primarily used to host recreational or social activities for minors, including, but not limited to, private youth membership organizations, clubs, social services, teenage club facilities, video arcades, or similar amusement park facilities. Nowhere in that definition does it call out if it's part-time, if it's only two days a week, if it's only three hours a week. It is a very broad definition on purpose. And I trust our city attorney's judgment on this simply because I look at what falls under this category as broadly as possible because I'm trying to follow the state rules and apply them locally. I don't want to do anything different than what the state's doing. I don't want to create a scenario where we might be sued because we differentiated. So yes, I know other communities have reduced buffer zones. I know other communities have pulled dance studios from their list, and I can respect that that's their opportunity to do that. I personally do not see that as something I'm comfortable doing because this is dance studios, primarily private facility, recreational for minors. It meets all the criteria. So for me, it's a strict interpretation, and I agree with our city attorney.
Okay, now, before we have any more discussion, I either need a second on Councilmember Vega's motion, and then we'll go ahead with discussion after that.
I'd like to just reaffirm my motion. Can we move that okay? Because I think it's valid. It's an interpretation subject to, with all due respect with Councilmember Osborne, it is wide open, and we can make that determination, and we do have the power to change this.
Okay, so we have a motion I need here.
Could I get you to repeat the motion, please?
The motion I made is that we not include dance studios and deem them as youth centers. Based on the fact that they are mixed use, they have limited hours, I don't see the risk factor there, deeming that the dispensaries that would, could be allowed, which is very limited if you look at the map, there's very little change there, and that they have their own security measures in place once in business.
That's a long motion. But the motion you made was that you wanted to make dance studios not considered youth centers.
Yes, sir.
That I will second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, and now we can continue with discussion. Councilmember Mosby.
Yeah. The reason I probably won't go along with this is the, if a youth facility and a dance studio is primarily, and I guess the key words there is primarily used for, and if it's primarily used for youth, but I think the calculation as it comes to play is not five hours a week, not one hour a week, but based on a 40-hour a week. And if it's 20-plus hours being used for youth, then I would say that's primarily being used for youth. But the key word in here, and as Councilmember Osborne said, primarily used for. So if it's open one hour out of 40, that means one hour it's being primarily used for something. 39 hours, which is primarily, 39 hours is closed. So it's primarily closed. So I think the computation has to be analyzed, and as the city attorney said, it says, when you make land use decisions on a rational basis, and I'm talking about a mathematical computation, and if something, and I mean anything, any of these facilities that we're declaring as youth facilities need to be primarily used for the youth. We can't have things that are blocking, they might be open one hour a week, and calling that a youth facility. And that was something that we were loose on, and with what Councilmember Osborne said, primarily used for. So I think we have to calculate the full schedule of the 40 hours, and if it's closed that many hours, then it's not in the primary. But in the sense of, if you have the children lined up going to it, and it doesn't matter if adults are in the cars waiting for them, it's still the facility is primarily being used for by youth.
Again, my motion stands, and I disagree with you. I think that's a political answer you gave me. I think the mathematical equation that you gave me is an answer, as a response. If you applied that across the board on all the decisions we make tonight, it would change all of our decisions.
And I think we need to go back in hindsight and thinking of this, because in seeing as these come forward and answer some of the people's questions, yeah, we're, this is evolving. This is new to us. Prop sixty-four, 465 pages, and we start turning around and going around corners and blocks, there's other things that come up. And that's what we're trying to do, is figure these things out as we're progressing along. So I agree, your statement as such, that it probably should be applied to the other items that we've done as well, and these other blockers and markers need to be identified. I think not only that, but I believe that these facilities that we're declaring need to be legally permitted with a use permit, if they need one, but they have the permit, but they also have the proper building permits to be where they are. So if you have somebody just setting up in a garage somewhere, are you going to qualify that if they don't have the proper use permit or the proper building permits to be there? But that's also a qualifier that we haven't used before, but I think that needs to be on the table as well. And I know it's a little bit out of the range of what we're discussing right now, and I'll make the motion later on that, but I believe that anything that we're using and declaring as a dot on the map should have all the proper permits as well. But I think they should go back to every one of these dots and analyze. Now granted, sc- Now granted, schools are different, and you're not going to get away with those, but I think these other dots need to be analyzed as well on the 40-hour work week.
Councilmember Vega.
Again, I respect your thought process on this. I don't see the risk factor. If you look at the maps versus dance studios or excluding them, there's hardly anything there. There's no impact there. There's nothing that's going, any of these businesses are not going to go next door to any of these businesses. Most of these are freestanding buildings.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, so the motion we're going to be voting on, Councilor, did you have something else?
No, sir.
Okay. So the motion we're going to be voting on is to, the motion was to not include dance studios in the buffer zone. Am I correct? That was your motion? Okay. Okay, without any further discussion, let's vote. Okay, that motion fails. Okay. Councilmember Mosby, yes?
What I want to qualify on top of this is that this dance studio should be based on, if it declared youth, that's based on the 40-hour work week. And my motion would be that any of these are coming forward, that the computation used, as they did here, is percentage of, on the chart here, the percentage that's minors and adults, with the mathematical computation, with number of hours as well, so that it's primarily computed, what its primary analysis is, whether it's closed, whether it's youth, whether it's adult, whatever, but that truly come up to be primarily used as such. That's, I know it's a little lengthy, but to make a motion on top of this, that's what...
Okay, so you're making a motion, sort of abbreviated for a city clerk. Succinct.
That the computation is based upon a 40-hour work week. And I think that would be understanding that...
For dance studios?
Yes.
Only dance studios?
Well, right now, because that's what we're talking about, but I believe it should go. I was going to keep it simple on the dance studio. I'd make another motion. I believe all the computations with the other blue dots in here should be based on, of course, not the standard that is built for, designed for, youth facilities. I think when something is up there, but yes, I'll just stay on that one right now, the dance studios.
Focusing on the dance studios, and based on the information that I was able to glean from the phone calls that Paralegal made today to the dance studios, the dance studio at 311F Long Po School of Dance, based on your approach, is open 31 hours a week, and 98% of its clientele is minors. So under your calculation, that would be a youth center. And I just want to point out that that would, the location of that would, can we put that map back up? Do the one without. That's the area that would be excluded. So I just want to point that out.
Right, and I'm just...
And based on the information that I have, that's the only dance studio that's operating much of the 40-hour work week. The other ones are like 14 hours or 12 hours or something like that.
And again, what I'm trying to use as your statement earlier is make land use decisions on a rational basis, primarily used for, and that's why I came up with that.
I appreciate that. And I know you aren't talking about it right now, but I think because it may come up later, it'd be helpful if I give you input now on the idea of, and then doing that same analysis for every other thing that could fall into the category of...
I'm going to hold off on that. I won't make that one.
Good.
I already saw the look in your face.
City clerk, are you clear on the motion? City attorney, are you clear on the motion?
I am.
Would you restate it for us?
That for a dance studio to be considered a youth center, the dance studio has to operate a majority of a 40-hour work week being open, and a majority of the clientele have to be youth.
Correct.
Okay.
May I just make a comment on that now that we've cleared the motion, or do you want to wait for a second?
Yeah, I might not even get a second.
Okay. Councilmember Vega.
I'd like to make a comment on that.
Well, wait, we...
Could we first have a second?
Yeah, we need a second.
Well, the last motion, you allowed somebody to make a comment.
I stopped it, though. I mean, so I need a second, then we can have discussion. So do we have a second on this? Okay, without a second, that motion fails. So we don't need any discussion. Okay, any other business on this item? Okay, so the city council is now going to recess to closed session, and after closed, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Osborne.
I was waiting my turn. Given we're on the cannabis issue, and we have finished the discussion on dance studios, having heard and realizing that I am part of the original drafter of the ordinance, we have a flaw in our ordinance regarding dispensaries accidentally being disallowed in industrial zones, because we chose to describe dispensaries only being allowed where pharmacies could exist. So that doesn't allow for a micro-business license to be in existence. It doesn't allow for vertical integration. So I would like to put out there that we consider changing our ordinance to allow dispensaries in industrial areas, so that those that choose to grow, manufacture, and distribute can also have a dispensary on-site in an industrial area, so that those two types of licenses are not disallowed. And I only bring it up now, simply because we're about to go to closed session, and we were talking about cannabis, and our city attorney said I could bring it up while we were on the subject. So I'd like to put it out there, because it might solve some of the problems that not defining a dance studio creates.
Councilmember Starbuck.
A couple of suggestions I'd make here. At this point, why don't we include it in our verbiage for the industrial zoning and operate it like we have the tasting rooms, where it would be a conditional use? It would be a very easy transition at that point, I think.
I believe that the whole point of the ordinance was not to have any conditional use permits. So our ordinance doesn't mandate conditional use in order to have cannabis license, and so as a result, it would be a conflict of our own ordinance to require a CUP in it. But that's my first guess, is that our ordinance is designed not to have CUPs involved in cannabis businesses.
That's true.
Right. So allowing a dispensary as a special item in industrial zones, because our ordinance doesn't require a CUP, does it require one because some industrial zones require it?
The way the cannabis ordinance currently reads about dispensaries is if a pharmacy is allowed by right, then a dispensary would be allowed. And it specifically says, then you can't need a, you don't need a, you can't, even if you need a conditional use permit, or even if you could operate a pharmacy with a conditional use permit, you can't do that as a dispensary, because the code specifically says that's not permitted. And the reason we added that language is because, remember, your current zoning code, basically, anything can be allowed anywhere with a CUP. So that's why we've structured it that way. We could, if the council wanted to, amend the cannabis ordinance to allow, to keep the idea of pharmacies are only by right, except a CUP could be granted for an industrial area. Since your zoning code already allows CUPs to allow pharmacies in industrial areas, the two could blend. I'm not advocating one way or the other. I just want to make sure you have all the options available to you.
And I just would add that that is an additional cost in the planning process.
Okay. Councilmember Osborne, did you want us to...
It's a potential solution I wanted to put forward, and if I had two in support to give direction to staff to come back with that as an adaption, I'm sorry, an adaptation to our ordinance, it was finding a new location to allow dispensaries that are being blocked out by the current broad definition of youth centers.
Okay, and she'll need a comment, too?
Sure, go ahead. Mrs. Osborne, why don't we just, can the motion just entail that we just allow it instead of going through the CUP process? I think that was your initial kind of question, and they came back with a CUP process, which is more convoluted, but why do we have to go through that process?
If I could be heard on that, remember, what we're trying to do is blend the cannabis regulations with your existing zoning regulations, so we don't have to go through a zone change or a zone amendment to also allow cannabis. Because pharmacies aren't permitted currently by right in the industrial zone, industrial district, the only way one could get a pharmacy in an industrial district under your current zoning is with a CUP. So we can't have the cannabis ordinance amend the zoning code to allow a pharmacy in an industrial area without a CUP.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll need, Councilmember Osborne still needs a second and a third to have it come back to us.
I'll give her a second on that.
I'll go with third.
Okay. Staff, are you clear on direction? Okay. Anything else? Okay, then, city council is now going...
I'm assuming you want that brought back as soon as I can bring her back.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, one more time, while we're on the subject. Mr. Pinoni, as far as the buffer zones and the 600-foot measurement, is it possible to have dual buffer zones within that 600-foot? Can you have a 600-foot buffer zone around schools and lower the buffer zone around any other area in the city to 400 feet? Seems to me that would probably solve a couple of issues.
As we discussed when we were first talking about buffer zones, I indicated to you that there is a legal perspective by some people that believe that Prop 64 grants the city authority to make those buffer zones smaller than what Prop 64 requires. My caution to you was, I would not recommend you do that, because I wouldn't want the city to be the one that's out in front, making that kind of a determination, and subject yourselves to someone challenging making that smaller. If what you're also saying is you'd want to make the buffer zone apply differently to schools and daycare centers than you would to youth centers, I would have the same concern, but maybe a little bit more heightened, because what's the, relying on the state's determination that 600-foot was applying to all three of those, what's the rationale for the city to only pick one of those three to make the buffer zone smaller? So I'm just saying, it could add to someone's argument as to why you'd have authority to do that.
Yeah, I guess my thought process would be leave a 600-foot, again, thank you, but 600-foot for the schools and 400-foot for other areas, is basically, is there a way that we can do a little research here? Maybe you can come back with us to see. Obviously, we're, there's no other city that we can use that has set precedence on this, is what you're saying. We would be the first one to adjust it, you know, into two sets...
In that particular way, yes.
Right.
So it's you, as a council, to decide whether or not you want to run the risk of that being challenged. It's not really, you don't need more information from me to decide whether or not you want to run that risk.
I got you. I understand that there's always a risk with everything we do. Anybody can be sued at any time for anything. I understand. I just want to make sure that we're exploring all our avenues, and I want the council to understand that we do have the authority up here, if we deem necessary by consensus, that if we need to adjust other areas. I wouldn't want to mess with anything as far as the buffer zone around schools. It was just a thought that I'd maybe bring up, to allow other businesses a little more leeway without excluding dance studios or anything else as youth centers. Obviously, we're going to leave those in. I'm okay with that, but I'd like to bring that up.
So you'd like to make that as a council request?
Yes, sir, I would.
Okay, and you'll need a second and a third for that to be brought back. And I don't see a second or a third. Okay. Anything else? Now, we're going to recess to a closed session, and we will return afterwards, if you would like to stick around, that you know what happens. Thank you very much.